You're watching H-Cam's Government Channel, where we provide coverage of the latest meetings and events happening in Hingham's local government. For more Hingham news, tune into H-Cam's Public Channel on Comcast 97 and Verizon Files 31, and Educational Channel on Comcast 22 and Verizon Files 29.
Good evening, everyone. It's Thursday, January 5th, 2017. Happy New Year. Calling the Board of Selectmen for a Hingham meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I see the anticipated each of your requested changes on December 8th, 2016. I'll entertain a motion to approve them as amended.
So moved?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 15th, 2016.
So moved?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? Yes, ma'am? Come to the microphone, identify yourself for the record.
Yes, I'm Jennifer Bertner from 16 Powers Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening and Happy New Year.
You too.
I'm here in the spirit of the New Year. About 21 months ago, I came in front of you all here in my lot, or was here before Ms. Powers was not here, and brought to the attention of the Board of Selectmen a serious issue with drug activity in the area that I live in. That was 21 months ago. The request we had was that the town, in a multi-departamental way, deal with what's going on in our area of town, in the Rockland Street, Powers Lane area. We have had very mixed experiences since then in terms of response to our request for help. We have, we did join the Coalition for Sometimes, the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, my husband and I, he's a doctor, and my background is in public policy. And for one year, we worked with them very closely, data collection, putting together case studies, other kind of work. We did resign, however, because we wanted to begin to discuss the illegal distribution of drugs in Hingham, and it was not permitted. So in protest, we did resign. Mr. Gannon is aware of this, and we did talk to him. He was very good about it, but we just felt we could not be part of a substance abuse prevention coalition that would ban, literally ban us from talking about illegal distribution of drugs in Hingham. I am here before you again, 21 months later, and I have learned many, many things in the last 20 months that frankly, I wish I did not know about my hometown. But I do, and I love my hometown. I went and took classes from teachers in this very room. I truly respect every department here. However, I really feel we need to have an open forum that will permit a discussion of all the different kinds of things we're seeing now. This opiate epidemic is horrific now. It's far worse now than it was 20 months, one month, year ago. And to have anyone tell us that great strides have been made is simply not opening their eyes to what families are going through. I go to funerals constantly. I go to memorials constantly. The number of sudden death obituaries in this area that I read about constantly, I can't stand to watch it anymore. And I am here, this time not asking for help, I am begging for help from the Selectmen Board. I know every person on this board and working in this room and sitting here and listening tonight has been touched by this or lost someone. I cannot pick up another needle off of my driveway, and I cannot close my eyes and close my mouth, no matter how many people tell me to get along with this, to be quiet about it and to learn to put up with it. I will never put up with drug dealers in my neighborhood approaching my children. I will never get used to picking up syringes on my driveway. And I will never get used to going down to St. Paul's to pray to find my eyes open to another, another, another funeral for someone who is OD'd. I am asking tonight that the Board of Selectmen please host an open forum on all forms of drugs that are going on in Hingham. Please, we need your help. We cannot wait another 21 months. I respect each and every one of you, Mr. Alexiades.
Thank you, Ms. Bertner.
We need your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else who'd like to say anything before we get into the business of the evening? All right, before we go on, I'm going to step back. Mr. Gannon has an announcement that he's going to be making.
It's an announcement on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. On Monday, December 19th, the Board of Selectmen met an executive session and voted to terminate the employment of Chris Phillips.
Thank you. Okay. First matter on the agenda is request for a change of managers. Is someone here from Stop &amp; Shop? Would you join us at the table, please? Identify yourself for the record and just explain briefly what you're looking to do.
My name is Keith Royer. I'm the store manager at the Hingham Stop &amp; Shop, recently assigned. I'm just replacing Scott Gilbertson. He has been transferred to another location. I've worked for Stop &amp; Shop for 27 years. I've held a license in the Quincy store prior to moving to the Hingham store. I was the store manager over in the Quincy mass store, and we had a license there also.
Questions from my colleagues.
Tom, this is all in order?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any real questions.
I don't either, but I commend the operation of Stop &amp; Shop down in Plaza. Shop there, very enjoyable. Thank you, I have a great time when I accompany my wife. I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of Packing Center Inc., DBA Stop &amp; Shop, for a change of manager from Scott Gilbertson to Keith Royer, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
So moved?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and good evening.
Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you. Good luck.
Okay. Budget hearings. Turning briefly to the budget. Does this conclude it with the exception of the Harbor Master?
We have to come back to Harbor Masters' budget. And you have, of course, obviously, have the school budget. And we have, we'll have a couple of small budget changes that we'll give you that have occurred recent. And you have one last budget that you haven't heard, which is the Public Safety Utilities Budget. It appears on page 82 of your book. It's a pretty straightforward budget. It's the fee we pay for emergency water service. And it's also includes, that amount is $354,424. It's set by Aquarian Water through the rate-setting process. The DPU authorizes or approves their request. And this is a fee that is paid to Aquarian for maintaining water at all times and all the fire hydrants throughout the town. The next item in the budget, $10,000, is the amount of money we give the fire department to replace fire hydrants that may need to be replaced during the year. This will account for, you know, maybe about four fire hydrants. Each one is a different process, depends on how old it is, how deep it is, the conditions, how long it takes to replace it. So that's why I say approximately four for that. Additionally, you also have $183,274 of our request for street lighting. And again, this comes straight from the charges that we receive from the light plant for our street lights in town, and it's calculated based on our street lights.
I'd just like to point out to the residents that if you're out and about and you notice that a street light is out, the light company is very responsive to requests with regard to that, simply get the pole number and call it in. And it's been my experience, so when you do that, it's fixed straight thereafter, so...
And I'll just piggyback on that and say, with respect to fire hydrants, we don't have snow, but it's coming. And the fire department always asks for the matters of public safety, that individuals who have fire hydrants on their property make sure that those are shoveled out so that if that is, if that water source is ever needed in the case of an emergency, the fire department has direct access and doesn't have to dig it out. So we appreciate everyone's efforts on that as well.
Yes, I agree.
Coming from somebody from Buffalo, you're going to jinx us now?
Blizzard 77, 40 years ago yesterday.
You want to share, you said there's no coming. You want to share something with us?
No, I have, I have no...
Because Randy told me there's no snow this season.
I'm not prognosticating, I'm just channeling Chief Olson, who I think would say that if he were here tonight, so...
I worked that blizzard. That was quite the experience.
So just so people know, that as we're winding up this more budget items to discuss, this is just a preliminary round, so I'm sure everybody knows that here, but at home, we'll be revisiting a number of budgets.
That's a great segue, because, you know, you guys are slated to talk about your budgets on the 12th, potentially the 19th. And ordinarily, you would be voting your budgets, you know, this week or next week, and then providing that to the advisory committee in total. The advisory committee this year is going to be handling their budgets a little differently, and I think that might give you guys an opportunity to do the same. They're going to be taking all the additional requests from all the departments and keeping them on a set-aside list, separate from the rest of the budget process. And at the end of the budget, they will look at how much available revenue they have, and then they'll go through and looking at them as one whole group, as opposed to just approving them throughout the process. Given that you try to reconcile with advisory through the process, I'd make the suggestion that perhaps you vote a set of budgets that represents what you feel is the base budget, not those additional requests. Leave them off the table like advisory, and then later in the budget process, usually the last week of February, first week of March, you sort of reconcile all those together. And then you guys get to see the same thing they do, which is, you know, we have 600,000 of additional requests, and we have 400,000 of revenue. Let's figure out what our priorities are. Just a suggestion.
I think that particularly this year, given that we know the revenue's a little tighter, we know we're not going to have the savings as we've had in past years on group insurance. To me, that's a more comfortable place to be because we won't have any visibility to the school budget. And, you know, just sort of speaking for myself, I want to make sure that, you know, if we think about kind of level services, and that's the watermark, I kind of want to make sure that we have enough revenue so that everybody can keep going the way they're going right now before we start adding things. And that's both on the municipal side as well as in education, so that would give us the benefit of it. It would leave the door open for those, for looking at those requests. But we'll have more information, so it will probably avoid having to go through that exercise twice.
I mean, I'll just say, I think we're kind of, at least my sense was we were approaching it that way, a little bit talking about when certain committees came in in terms of budgets. I just want to keep an open mind in terms of, you know, priorities that might pop up, but certainly to give a general approach that way is fine. I just want to give myself a little leeway so that I can, something unusual comes up that we can...
Ted, one thing that might be a good idea, and I know we used to do this on the advisory committee, and it was helpful, the budget books are terrific, and they contain a lot of great information. As we get down to the end there, sometimes on advisory, what we used to do is we'd just create like a punch list of all the additional requests on one page and the amount. And it just kind of made it, it was a helpful reference, so that might be something that maybe, you know, Sue could put together, and both our board and the advisory committee could use it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's move to the next item on the agenda, and that would be the reserve fund transfer. Eddie, can you take us through this?
Well, I'm going to give you the concept. Tom did the legwork on it. We, the Board of Selectmen took ownership of a building on Cushing Street from the light plant, so just like homeownership, they don't own it, you own it. They don't pay the bills anymore, you pay the bills. We calculated $30,000 of costs to keep the building in its carrying condition with really no usage whatsoever, just almost mothballing it. I think the Board is aware, though, that we were able to get the high school rowing boats, I'm not sure if that's the appropriate term for them, with their equipment in that facility, that's a challenge for us every year. We usually go through some exercise trying to find a space for them somewhere around town. And last year, they were parked, and I think many people saw them out behind the ballfields on Carson Field, out in the weather all winter. And I think they're 50,000, 60,000 apiece, so... And while the rowing association did buy them, they donated them to the town, and we own them, so they're ours. So I think having them undercover makes me feel a little more comfortable. I'm pretty sure the rowing folks feel pretty excited about it. They were there with you, right?
Yep, they were all put into the building two weeks ago, three weeks ago, so...
So the request is for the basic carrying costs, and Tom can detail them for you. This request will follow a budget amendment for next year, because we're going to have to now add to the budget to take care of that building for next year. And, you know, we're going to have to start thinking about how we're going to, you know, manage those carrying costs.
Just a quick comment, and I know I appreciate it, because I know in the past, there was concerns from the, you know, the rowing folks. And I'm sure the town, that if an asset such as that is not stored properly, and it's nice to have a location, I want to thank everybody that participated in coming up with that solution. And I know this isn't the appropriate time, so I don't want to get bogged down in it, but I let folks know that we're obviously, obviously actively thinking about what to do with that property, and hopefully in the near future, we'll come up with some proposals.
Well, I've asked Tom to draft an RFP for the board, and we'll give it to you. I just haven't had a conversation with all of you about it, because I want to give Tom time to do it. But now that we're talking about it, Tom, you're on the spot, we've done the RFP in other sense. But we've done this with a lot of other properties in town. The Tree and Park Barn is a perfect example, where we put it out to a short-term lease for three years, so that the town can avoid having its carrying costs paid. So we have enough to pay the carrying costs until you figure out what you want to do with the building long-term. We've been doing that now for about, I think, seven or eight years. That was, I think Laura Burns is, give her credit for that. Selectmen Burns has thought that it's a nice way to stabilize the building as opposed to selling it, because then you never know, you know, what's the town going to want in 10 years, or 20 years, or 30 years. So you just, let's get a chance to, right now, I have a $60,000 bill in front of me. I'm trying to figure out what to do with, for next year. Be nice not to have a $6,000 bill while we have a $600,000 budget deficit. And I don't think that the rowing association is going to be able to give us the money to carry that building, so that'd be my guess.
Right, and I'm not sure we'd necessarily ask them to pay for it either, but...
So we got to figure a solution out somehow.
Since you brought it up, I want to make sure that that was not something that we...
No, no, no. I've worked with the rowing association for 10 years now, looking for buildings for them throughout the town, so I know, you know, the struggles they have and the resources they have. So I didn't propose asking them for the $6,000.
Oh, good. No, I didn't think it did.
They were given that building for free this year.
The reason why I even brought it up is Tom and I had talked about it a little bit, so I just want to let people know that there was discussions, as there is on many things, and this is one of them.
Do you want to go through the details of the request?
Sure.
So the building maintenance line item was $2,500 anticipated. That's, there was an old water heater in the building that needed to be replaced, and we're going to have to do an evaluation of the heating and cooling system for the back office area. That'll happen tomorrow. We're anticipating some $500-plus fee for that. So looking at $2,500 as total fee for the building maintenance. Hopefully, nothing will come from the evaluation review, Jeff Peasy doesn't expect that, so... The carrying, the largest bulk of the carrying costs is the electric cost. It's electric heat in that building, not surprising, it was run by the electric company, so they didn't have to, they didn't have to pay for that. So anyway, we're going to deal with that, but it's an electric heat building, so we're looking at $25,000 in total annual, or total carrying costs for the eight-month period that we're going to have to fill here. $1,500 for an alarm, and $1,000 for water, totaling $30,000.
I will point out that the light plant left the building in very good shape for us. Thank you very much, General Manager Paul Henyou. Also took the extra step of fixing the roof for us. Basically, they gave us the building in good condition.
And a leaky pipe out in front.
Right.
Yep. I spoke to Mr. Henyou just before Christmas, and he alerted me to the fact that it is electric heat, so we have to keep it on so we don't freeze the pipes. So I pass that on to our town administrator and assistant town administrator.
And so the building will be managed, going forward right now anyway, by Tom through our custodial staff here. Jeff has been going over there to manage it, and we'll set up a cycle so that we watch it to make sure that the pipes don't break, and the snow on the roof, and all the other issues that we have to deal with with every other building are taken care of there.
Any other questions? We good?
Sure.
I'll entertain a motion to approve a reserve fund transfer for the purpose of funding carrying costs for the property located at 308 Cushing Street, the former Hingham Municipal Light Plant Building, in the amount of $30,000.
So moved?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a motion to appoint the following full-time police officers, and that would be police officers from other towns, as Hingham's special police officers. I'll read them off. Hanover Police Department Sergeant Daniel Salvucci and Sergeant Timothy Kane, Hull PD Officer Michael Flaherty, Norwell PD Sergeant Erpo Normenemi. The name's in there, it'll be reflected in the minutes appropriately. Officer William Pasteris, Rockland PD Officer Richard Sommers, Sean Brundage, and Jeff Dorenzo, Situate PD Officer Owen Kirkbride, Sergeant James Bullman, Sergeant James Gilmarten, and Lieutenant Michael O'Hara. It's my understanding that these gentlemen are prosecutors down at the courthouse, and they need power for that for those...
That's right.
...times when there's a problem.
And this came as a request from a judge down at District Court.
So yeah, I just, I mean, I don't know if there's any explanation, but I, it's funny, having been in that courtroom as part of my profession many times, it never really quite dawned on me that, you know, that that might be presented unique circumstances where you might need something like this in place. And I think Judge Bradley deserves credit for asking, you know, raising that issue. And it certainly would be beneficial to us, obviously, since it's in our town.
Yeah, I mean, I think this presupposes, and Deputy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this assumes that our own prosecutor or our own officers aren't around. Because they would be the lead on any arrest out at the courthouse.
Well, I just know in police work, you never do know, so it's always good to be, have the extra precaution. That's what I took from this, and I think it's a good idea.
And there's no, the cost to us is, I believe, actually zero in this case, because they're all full-time officers. There is a charge that we have for every officer, we have to maintain a specific insurance policy, but full-time officers get that policy through their existing towns.
And this is subject to annual reappointment?
All your specials are subject to annual reappointment. And that would be something that the police department will have to focus on, making sure that we go through this list and we take off those who are no longer active at the court district each year, so we don't wind up getting a large collection of special officers. Municipalities are required to maintain a half a million dollar life insurance policy on officer. Officer dies in line of duty, town's required to make that compensation and payment. So we carry an insurance policy on our officers that are not, that are not covered in other fashions. So you don't, this is an industry-wide thing that we've been watching for decades now, a decade and a half since that unfortunate situation occurred, where the officers lost their lives. So what we don't want to do is wind up seeing that list grow and not be aware of what it is. That's why we do it annually, and that's why they check to make sure they're actually, every special officer we have is actually working for us, and not just something that was left over from 10 years ago.
So the first meeting of the year would be, this would normally be addressed on an annual basis?
It's when it occurs annually. I'm not sure if it's calendar annual or some other period of time in the year. I think it might be April, actually, when we do it, but I'm not that sure.
So we have, I'm talking about the appointment. You're talking about the appointment's going to be...
Yeah, I think we do them every April or May.
Okay, so we'd be doing this again in April, based on this? Okay, good. Just good to know.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Oh, second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the vote list. Entertain a motion to approve the deeds and to authorize the chairman to sign any ancillary closing documents related to the acquisition of a Laina property.
So moved?
Second.
I just should ask, maybe, so people at home know where we are in the process, just Chairman, if maybe Ted or somebody could just let folks know. It's obviously, I believe it's great news in that sense, so I figured maybe just let people know.
I think we'll have an announcement for the public next week when we go through the actual signing of the documents and everything.
Okay, so we're just approving it?
Correct.
All right, that's fine, great.
I think a few weeks ago, we extended the closing date.
Yes.
And so...
So as soon as we close, we'll...
We're getting there then, right?
Yep.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to renew the Limousine License for GP Transportation, Inc.
Just, did we vote on that? Because I know after the second I...
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is...
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to renew Limousine License for GP Transportation, Inc. I take it there's been no problems with the guy? No problems with the guy?
No.
It's not on the vote total, I know.
We missed the vote on the vote sheet.
We're good. Sorry about that.
Got that as well.
So moved?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to renew the Common Victula License for Elite Vending, Inc., One Tailbutts Drive, Hingham.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to renew the Common Victula License for Bonds and Noble's Book Sales, Inc., 96 Jerry Street, Hingham.
So moved?
Second.
We have one other vote that's not on your vote list, but it was on your possible votes of your agenda, we just didn't put it on the vote list. And that is to adopt the revised vehicle use policy, which we've given to you. I could take you through the changes, but the specific change appears, you could see it highlighted in blue on the first page. Use of town vehicles for illegal purposes is a matter which violates town law policy, and or personal business use is prohibited. So we clarified that. That was just sort of a neatening up. But one aspect that we did, and this is in part of our conjunction with our negotiation with the Supervisors Union, is we added on Section 9, domicile parking and take-home vehicles, in the, one, two, three, four, five, six, in the seventh line, we added a phrase, "and are not, are not for personal use and incidental personal use," which essentially is allowing the employees to use vehicles for incidental personal use to and from home. And I want to be very specific about what we talked about, what this means. It means that if we're having a town employee take a townhome vehicle home on a regular basis, if they want to stop for coffee on the way home, or stop for coffee on the way to work, or if they want to go to the gym on the way home or on the way back to work, if they want to stop at the grocery store because they need to pick something up, like all of us do on a regular basis in our lives, then that's okay. What they cannot do, and we're very clear about, is this is not their second car. This is not something they can take to Springfield, Six Flags with the kids, or go to the beach, or, you know, something. It's to and from work, and the ancillary incidental uses relative to that.
Ted, you also, I think, mentioned to me on Tuesday that as part of this policy that it is, that family members cannot ride in the vehicle?
Correct.
And so what this would exclude is dropping a child off at school, or...
Well, that's the part of everyday life that you don't get when you use a town vehicle, and to be fair, a lot of company vehicles, too. There's insurance reasons for that, and so we've never allowed that. And that's clear.
Just so I'm clear, Ted, is the, who does this cover, or is there a...
This is for the DPW Supervisors only.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And, actually, I'm sorry, no, this is, I'm sorry, this covers the entire town policy. We did it in conjunction with the DPW Supervisors. They have the bulk of the vehicles that go home. Very few other departments have vehicles that go home. You have your police chiefs, your fire chiefs, your deputies, and so we'll cover them, too. But it's the same vein and the same ideology that, you know, we don't think administratively there's a problem with someone stopping off and getting a cup of coffee on the way to work or home, or something incidental like that. We want to, we want to make it functional for both sides, not so restrictive that, you know, someone has to go home and then get in their car and drive all the way back to Hingham to go to their health club. That seems a little ridiculous, Ted.
And just so I'm clear, was there, is there something that we picked up on, that there was something missing? You said, I don't know if you said cleaned it up, or...
Just in the front part, we just wanted to make sure that it was clear that they can't be used for any illegal purpose. I mean, sometimes you have to say these things that are fairly straightforward and obvious, but we do. Can't use a town-owned vehicle for an illegal purpose. We hadn't said that before.
And just, just so I'm clear, on paragraph number nine, I know they're saying that they need to agree, abide by... I know they're saying that they need to agree, abide by the policy. It says "not for personal use and incidental personal use". So are you saying that it is okay for use of incidental use?
Yes. The purpose of this policy is to amend it to allow for town employees to use their vehicles for personal, incidental personal use to and from the office. That's what this policy is intended to, not intended, what it reads and what it means. And that's a change from what it was before, which said no personal use, period.
Well, the only reason I'm even mentioning it is I don't have a problem with the concept. It's just that when I read it, and it's "not for personal use and incidental personal use", it appeared to me that you were saying that it's not allowed.
Seems like the not.
And so you've done just the opposite of what you wanted.
I can tell you that the attorneys have gone over this, and they did their appropriate. We have members of the personnel board who kind of sat in a little bit.
I'd like to wait maybe till next week to get this done if we could, because I'm reading it fine. Just make sure, I guess before we do it, unless you want to correct it. But I just, I just think maybe somebody could correct it and.
All right.
Because Mary sees the same.
As long as I'm hearing, because we also have a member from, I see we have a representative from the Teamsters here. Do I hear from the board that you're okay with the concept? You just want to make sure the wording is correct?
Yes.
Okay, great.
It reads right now, if you read it, if I read it out loud, you might understand the point Paul's making because I was sort of having the same reaction reading it. It says, I was just picking up, "he/she had read, and having read and agrees to abide by the town's vehicle use policy, which states in part that town vehicles may be used only for town work-related matters and are not for personal use and incidental personal use". And so the "not" seems to be applying to the incidental personal use. I would just suggest that a quick fix here might be, "may be used only for town-related work matters and incidental personal use and are not for."
So we spent a little bit of time with this with a member of the personnel board before.
There's a version that doesn't say this, I don't know. I think, Ted, I think what might have happened was, this was the original version. There was a version that was edited to match it. They were both attached to an email.
Let's give you a fresh copy at your next meeting. Two things have to happen at your next meeting. You're going to go into an executive session shortly to discuss the DPW contract, the DPW supervisors' contract. I'm hoping that you'll vote to accept what the personnel board is going to present to you. If you do, you have to come back next week and ratify that vote, and you can just simply ratify the policy at the same point in time. And we'll clean it up, and we'll make sure that both Andy and the personnel board make sure they see the copy that we have.
I think Mary's suggestion solves it, but we'll let someone else do the fine tuning.
But I think your point, I think what you're hearing from the board is the concept that is, there's agreement here on the concept.
Yes. You have to, sorry, they can't hear you at home if you're not speaking a little bit of my.
Sorry, Jack Manning, thirty-two mill air, actually speaking as a member of the personnel board. To be frank, we were hoping to get that vote tonight, and we were, we didn't pick up on this discrepancy between those two paragraphs. Andy's here. I just said to Andy, would it be all right, you know, to go into next week with it? He's fine with it. Honestly, we would prefer if we could get it voted on tonight with the amended change, but if you feel.
I'd just rather have counsel look at it and make sure, because there's some consequences if it's wrong.
Correct, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for your work. I think you get the impression that it's more of a typo thing than anything else.
Sure.
We're about to sign off into executive session, but before we do, Tom, is there anything you'd like to?
I did want to let everyone know that the DPW recently received a Mast EP grant for up to, valued at up to sixty-five hundred dollars. So for the sustainable, sustainable recovery, materials recovery program. So Randy wanted me to let everyone know.
Do we note it? Ted?
So next week, I'm preparing an overview of financial status, so to speak, of where the town is in a couple of different areas. And I'll have it for you for, I'll try to get it to you early part of next week. I know you like to look at things before your meetings, but I think I'm going to need the weekend to finish it. And I'm hoping it can give you some guidance and some structure to look at your budgets, your capital projects, and just a lot of the things that you have in front of you as you begin looking at your next six months. I think the chairman has asked for a goal review. And so I can give you an update on where you are with your goals and, you know, talk about what we have left to do for the rest of the year.
Okay, good. Paul?
Just with the Happy New Year to everybody. Hope you have a healthy and prosperous one. The only thing I really would comment on is, and it's just more just to let people know that we're still working on it. At the end of the year, at the last meeting, we talked about Bear Cove and trying to get a dialogue going of folks with all different perspectives and trying to come up with something at this meeting regarding that. And I think just because maybe the holidays and logistics, I did talk to Tom about it. He's working on it, and I think in the very near future, we'll try to get something, the twelfth it is, some discussion, and hopefully we can get some people together in some kind of committee format put together so people can start coming up with ideas. I think that's great.
Mary?
I'll look forward to that conversation next week. I think, I think there's a desire on the part of the board to perhaps address it. I'm not sure that we're, I think we probably have some different ideas. And I'll look forward to hearing from my colleagues and sharing my own thoughts.
Okay. As for me, I'm feverishly working to get a report together from the South Hingham Working Group. Julie Sneeve is the chair, doing a fine job with Emily Wentworth. And I'm very hopeful that the residents find it instructive with respect to the situation in South Hingham as it relates to present status on the ground in terms of infrastructure and potential for future growth there. So with that, I'll entertain a motion that the board enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the DPW supervisors because discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, and we will not return to open session.
So moved?
Aye.
All those in favor, by roll call, vote.
Aye.
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 Good night, everyone. See you next week.
Good night, everybody, thank you.